Good evening, everyone. I call to order the August 15th, 2022 Business Meeting of the Cincinnati Board of Education. We welcome everyone and request everyone in the audience to silence your cellphones and electronic devices. Ms. Wagner, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Bolton?
Present.
Mr. Craig?
Here.
Ms. Jones?
Here.
Dr. Moffett?
Here.
Mr. Morosky?
Here.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Here.
President Lindy?
Here. Members of the public who wish to speak and are watching remotely may do so by clicking the chat button now. Chat feature will be open for your requests for five minutes. Please submit your name, your affiliation, your school, community, your topic, and your contact information if you would like a direct response to any question you might have. Superintendent Wright, do you have any updates for us this evening?
Only two updates today. So the first I would like to share and to celebrate our team. Yesterday, we did have a very successful transportation town hall. At our highest number, we had about 243 participants that were actually on the call for the town hall. One of the things that I would like to raise is that Metro is honoring again this year for the first week of school, free ride-alongs for parents that would like to ride the route with their students for the first day. And so that was something I was not aware of until yesterday. So I do want to make sure that we share that with everyone so that we can take advantage of that. The second thing is today we did have our opening superintendent's address, and it was very successful as we started off. I do want to thank you to all of our board members for participating, whether you were in person or virtual. It was great to have your participation in that. And the last, on Friday, we had our, the initiation or the implementation of our Be Present campaign, which is our community-wide call to action for support in the work that we're doing for our children. So the only thing that we're asking around Be Present is everyone determine what your present is and take the pledge on our website to be present. You see the slide that is up now that talks about Be Present, but if you go to our website, there is definitely more information there on the initiative and more to come. So those are the updates that I have for today.
Thank you, Superintendent. We're going to move right along to hearing of the public. Do we have any in-person speakers tonight? Looks like no, but just wanted to check. So we have no one online and we have no one here. So happy first week back, folks. We don't have any, any folks here this evening. Ms. Bolton?
Yes. We have stunned the com- It's on. Just need to lower it. Thank you. Just to the superintendent's update, usually at this time, too, and usually is not a good word any longer, so I'll try to find another one, but not right now. How is the superintendent feeling about the approaching, what, 72 hours or so? She was very, very forthcoming about the readiness, and I think it was something, very few public members were watching that, but if there's a few things she'd like to add, and by, by the way, today was great and very exciting, very uplifting. So if there's a few things, too, if you don't mind, Mr. President-
That's fine, yeah. And then we'll, and then we'll pick back up with our priorities, but Ms. Wright-
That'd be great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So for each of our schools, and thank you, Board Member Bolton, for all of our schools, as our staff members, as our principals actually have returned to buildings, we did start with our own form of a readiness dashboard, so our opening of school readiness, where each of our schools has gone through and identified their level of readiness by school. That is looking at every area of readiness. So that is from facilities to everything included in operations, to building cleanliness, to classrooms being ready and prepared for students, to vacancies, to ensuring that we have individuals in schools that can do payroll and requisition. So we've looked at every element in the school building. That has been updated twice, and the third update is tomorrow. I think the most important thing about that, and I do have to offer kudos to the team, it's the follow-up that happens from there. So while the principals give the initial response for what they are feeling, what they are seeing around readiness, our team then follows up with them to make sure that they have the areas that they need covered, or that if there's something else that we need to address, that we're addressing that as well. And I do think that it's important, and we followed up with principals. We had our opening of school principals, principals meeting last week, and the principals were very excited, I think is the right word to use, that there was follow-up from one week to the next. And so we know that what we will see tomorrow will definitely give us the next steps around where we are with readiness. And I think the last thing is, along those same lines around readiness, we hear about the vacancies across the country. And right now, as a district, as of last Thursday, we were collectively at 39 vacancies, and of those vacancies, 18 of them were core vacancies. We have worked in partnership with our union. We had teachers that were fully released in other roles, roles that were very important, or roles that did not directly serve students in classrooms. And so therefore, we've worked with them. Those teachers have gone back to classroom spaces to serve students as teachers in the classroom. And so now we have four core vacancies as of this afternoon, two science and two Montessori. So just wanted to share that as an update as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Wright. So we're going to transition to item D on our agenda, which says next set of board priorities. And just to set some context here for folks and for anybody who is watching, since I started as president in January, we've, one thing I'm proud of is that we've operated with a clear set of time-bound priorities that reflect the collective perspective of the board. We did this first in January with a time period of just six weeks. What are the most important things for our board, our new board, to win on over the first six weeks of the year? We then did that again for a period of three months. What are the most important three to five areas where our board needs to find some success over the next three months? Those priorities expired June 13th. So over the last several weeks, I've spoken with every board member one-on-one, and we're going to go through a process this evening for the next few minutes to figure out between now and November 8th, what are the three to five areas where it's going to be most important for our board to win, and what concretely would winning look like? Just a few thoughts on why I believe this matters so much. Probably in any organization, but I think particularly in an organization that's as large as Cincinnati Public Schools, there really is a limitless number of things that we could focus on. And I believe it's very important that we decide together what's going to be most important and to align our time and resources against those priorities. I also believe it's really important that we make these decisions as a board with a board vote. I don't yet know what the three to five are going to be, as you'll see in a moment, but we'll give people a chance to weigh in, make a decision together, and then move forward. And then lastly, something we tried over the last three months that was new, and I thank our board staff for their help on this front, is to track the time we're spending in meetings, to see, are we really spending the majority of our time on the things that we said were most important? We were able to do that last time. I believe we should be able to do that this time, too. So with that, I'd like to call everyone's attention to a document you received, and it's also on the screen. It should be in your folders tonight. Looks like this. It's also up on the screen. Should be on Board Docs also. And what you'll see here is there were two items that came up quite consistently. Either everybody or almost everybody mentioned the first two. The first one is continuing to move forward next steps on governance training, and the second is to have a clear process and timeline in place for strategic planning for the district. Then you'll see there's a whole series, A through H, that came up a little bit less often. Some of these are items that a single person mentioned. Some of these came up two, maybe three times. What I'd like to try, to try to move us forward here is I will go ahead and make a motion that we adopt the first two as priorities, given that there was so much interest in them. I'd like to see if there's a second. We'll open it for discussion. We'll have a vote. And then however that goes, we'll then tackle the next list and give everybody a chance to weigh in where they like. So I will make that motion that we adopt the first two as part of our three to five. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton. Any discussion on those first two items? Ms. Bolton?
Yes, if we can describe to the public, or at least whether anybody's listening or not, for the record, what we mean by those two, I think would be helpful.
Sure. So I'd invite others who also mentioned these. If people are tired of hearing me talk, anybody want to say why you put one of these two on here? Go ahead, Mike.
I can speak to, I believe I said, continue with the governance training. I just, I feel like it's been a good exercise. I don't think anything bad can come from us locking ourselves in a room publicly for a few hours, you know, a year to like talk things through and figure out how to have better systems in place. So I know that was why I said that. I'm not sure I said much about number two, but still am I for number one. I think it's been a good exercise. I feel like getting to know folks better, talking about some real things. So I have high hope.
Thanks, Mike, on number one. Anybody who did mention number two, I mean, Ms. Bolton, you were one of them. You're welcome to share a bit if you'd like, or there were others, too.
I'm very happy to make those one and two. I just like us to explain it to the public what that might mean and might have some-
I just, for clarification, because you lost me at one. Having trouble hearing. The priorities that you're addressing or the, or you're asking about are the ones at the top of the proposed priority around governance and strategic planning, or the ones below that, transportation and levy?
The ones above. So what we're going to do is when we're done, we'll probably have five total. And what I was trying to do to move us forward is, is take a first vote on the ones where there was a lot of alignment.
Okay.
And then go to the ones where there was a little bit less one. Okay, so last comment, and then we'll move it.
Yes, I think the governance piece we've already committed to, so it's not exactly something that is a vote that counts. We want to do it, and to the public, that means how we kind of function ourselves and also function with the administration and also represent you, the community. I think the strategic plan piece is, and I've said this for a few months now, I do think that the strategic plan piece is part of the fact that our most recent strategic plan, and I think I've been here for three of them, and maybe only two and a half, so to speak, our current one that the community participated in greatly is at its end, and I know we are waiting for the administration to make an evaluation of how and where we are at the end of that. One of the years was COVID, another half of the year was this or that, and our treasurer participated also kind of noticed after the thing had happened as to how much it might cost. And so I think we await the success and the adequacies and the inadequacies of the current and now ended strategic plan, and we are due to have another. And it's, it's very important for the board to decide what kind of strategic plan and the administration, whether it's a three-year, a five-year, who participates, who doesn't participate. I have interest in, in looking at it as part of the RFP that my colleagues to my right had something to do with as to selecting who would be helping us with the governance. I think the RFP even makes it possible for us to either continue with Great City Schools or to choose yet another entity to have that. So I think the strategic plan needs to be expedited to the degree that we can. I heard the superintendent say today, and I wrote it down regarding the leader moves fast, which was music to my ears, and also the fact that our treasurer is trying so hard to create a new kind of budget process where the community participates widely with the help of our, my colleague, Dr. Moffett, on engagement. So I would hope that these two should be voted on as the top two priorities and with the timeline piece as to whether or who conducts it, how it is conducted, and it is a philosophical decision as much as it is anything. So I would, I would hope that everybody would, would vote to agree with you, Mr. President, that these would be the top two, and there's something to talk about for both, but most particularly about the strategic plan and the urgency that I feel about it for our budget in the coming years.
Thanks, Ms. Bolton. We will give it to Vice President Jones. I'll just remind everybody that in, under Roberts' rules, everybody gets two times. So Ms. Bolton has used hers. This is Vice President Jones's second.
And she will feel very comfortable insisting on a third if need be.
I'll be, I'll be brief. And, but, but it actually is in response to Ms. Bolton thinking about it. And as Ms. Bolton always does, and I'm, I'm smiling about it because I understand a little bit better how she thinks. She always makes her point about how strongly she feels about something, and she does it very eloquently. I do agree that that is a high priority. One of the things, and then I'll be quiet, is that the people who have been assigned as the point people to work with Council of Great City Schools had just a preliminary conversation about the strategic planning process. And I think the point that I want to make is that as of today, there's been no decision about how we proceed. And, and so I, I think we have to be open to at least hearing and discussing with Council of Great City Schools how we proceed. And now I hear Ms. Bolton, who has her ideas about it, and I think we have seven ideas about how we approach it. And if we can agree that it's, if it's that important, we can't continue, we can't just, you know, beat a dead horse. Sorry for animal lovers, sorry about that. But we can't, you know, have seven people just continue a discussion because we're going to have to really make a quick decision once we have that discussion. But I do agree that it is high priority, and hopefully we can move forward on really getting to that conversation about the process.
Great, thank you very much, Vice President Jones. Anybody who has not spoken have any discussion on this first motion? Hearing none, could we ask our, Ms. Wagner, do we need a roll call, or can we just do a voice vote? Great. So all in favor of adopting the first two as two of our five, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, so we're moving right along. Again, we will have somewhere between three and five priorities at the end of this. We're moving to the second part of the page, and I have to say, just from my perspective, all of these feel important. And as a, as one member of our board, I could get behind any of these as being something that we focus on over the next three months. So the way I wanted to propose that we move this forward is that we do this in two steps. Step one, anybody who would like to advocate for one of the items that they put on here should have a chance to do that. Anybody who wants to ask a question about one of the ones that are on here, they should have a chance to do that. And once we've given everybody a chance either to advocate or to ask a question, I was going to suggest everybody gets three votes, and we'll just go A through H. You can vote three times. I'll keep tallies here, and the items that get the most votes will be priorities three through five. Ms., Vice President Jones?
I have a suggestion. On number, I think there's a way to combine those based on a conversation that we all had recently that I believe we in our, I can't remember which committee it was. We had a committee meeting on committee structures, and we talked about the alignment of the superintendent's activities and our activities. So I think there's a way, in terms of wording, that in a way that speaks to the alignment around community engagement and outreach that includes both administration and board, and then that becomes one priority.
It could be. I think the way I'd like to think about this is that this is Vice President Jones advocating for an idea she has. I want to give other people a chance to like, if they want to make other arguments or if they want to ask questions about that, because it may be that people agree and love it, it may be that people don't like it. I don't want to do it yet until we give everybody a chance to respond.
That's fine. I was just trying to, you know, condense it.
Sure.
But anyway.
So we'll go Dr. Moffett first, and then we'll go to Mrs. Weinberg.
So I really, I think G is more administration rather than board. So I don't know if you, in transcription, if there was a board concern, because saying that administration is regularly consulting key community stakeholders is not really a board, not a board action, an administration action. So was there something that missed transcription when you put this together?
I was trying my best to play back what I heard people say. I could imagine a version of this where our role is checking and holding the administration accountable for doing this. I could imagine a world where we merge them, like Vice President Jones said. I could imagine a world where we don't do it at all.
I guess my question is, since you put this together in an effort to listen to board members individually, I'm assuming that this was what someone said. Did the person who said that intend for it to be the board monitoring administration, or they want administration to do that? Because the way that it's written, it's not written as a board action. It's, I mean, except for monitoring that. So since you're the keeper of the notes and that you compiled this for everyone's thought, I'm asking you, or the person who's, that belongs to.
So, so my understanding was that it would be monitoring the administration, so checking to make sure that this is happening well. And again, if it's not what the majority of the board wants to focus on, let's not do it. If it is, let's go for it. Mrs. Weinberg?
I just wanted to propose for the first thing, for the levy. I didn't know if we were moving on past giving our opinion, but I think that's actually really important for us, and I think I would propose that as one of the first things for us to talk about.
We're going on. Thank you, Mrs. Weinberg. Other folks want to advocate for individual ones or ask a question about any? Mr. Craig?
So for number, or letter E, the committee realignment, I know that we have a particular resolution that's on the agenda today that might actually have completed that.
You want to put it on there? That way we can give ourselves credit?
I'm going to put it on there, but it'll be green already.
That's a fair point. Thank you, Mr. Craig. Ms. Bolton?
Yes, I want to second, if I could, Member Weinberg's important suggestion about the levy, because only we are responsible as the board for providing financial security for the district. Other people may monitor it, manage it, but we are the ones that must ask the community for that levy. I think so, I would second that. I also agree that we've maybe sort of, kind of, in a smaller way perhaps incrementally, accomplished E to Member Craig's position. I would also second the idea that G, and even though it's a high priority for me, C, those are two things that I would assume that the administration has to take responsibility for rather than us. But I do believe transportation has to be one of the several priorities because of our failures along the way, not by anybody here, administration or board. So I would, I would like to suggest one is these, one of these is already done, two of these need to be merged as administrative responsibilities, and that levy must be a top priority, and I would, not surprisingly, add transportation because it impacts everything we do. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton. Mr. Morosky?
I was just gonna, I like all these as well. There's some, you know, again, I feel administrative that really aren't maybe our business, at least again, to Dr. Moros' point, the way they're written, so I don't see them on here. And I also think E has pretty much started, but I want to give a big vote of confidence and encourage us to elect A, one of our priorities, transportation. We've put a lot of work into that as a board and the administration, and I know there's a lot of efforts in place to keep folks accountable to what we put in our new policies. And I think that's a good one, too. You know, it's got a sunset date of November, like keep tabs on it. Some of these, I think, we have to do all the time, which is why hopefully I'll see them baked in, you know, a strategic plan or something. But transportation is the one I really want to hang my hat on.
Great, thanks, Mr. Morosky. Any other last? I think we've everybody's gone once. People can go a second time if they want, and if not, that's fine.
So I'll just give my, my thoughts that I, when, when the question was asked, it wasn't asked like, you know, as a priority, it was asked like, what does winning look like? And I answered the question based on that, not necessarily differentiating between things that the board could do versus admin, but as the district as a whole. So I think that the levy is our responsibility. We need to, we need to monitor that. That just should be a no-brainer. That's why I think the question was a little ambiguous in how it was presented. Transportation should definitely be something that we've worked on for a huge amount of time, and the community is extremely concerned about transportation. We have spent a significant amount of time about transportation. And then I, I think the board should stay focused on overarching goals. So that would leave that, I think, engagement, our improved community and parent engagement aligned with, when, I think when you asked me this question, I said the strategic plan starts. We've started community engagement sessions for the strategic plan and for goals and guardrails. So I think I aligned all of that underneath community engagement. So it wasn't about holding specific community engagement events, although it is inclusive of that, it was around all of our efforts, administration and collaboration with the board, the financial town halls and collaboration with the board, strategic planning and collabor- I, I think community engagement is bigger than just those two bullets there. So those are my three, because I think everything else should be administration, and we should just be monitoring that. I don't want to make that, I don't understand how we would make that a goal. That should just be a monitoring with a guardrail and not something that we aspire to do. That's our responsibility.
Thank you, Dr. Moffett. Last call for other comments, either questions people want to ask or pitches that you want to make. Okay, hearing none. Just a reminder, you get three votes. I'm going to try to tally these here. I will do my very best. I can't promise that I won't mess it up, but we'll just go through each of them. I think what I'm going to suggest on G and H for Vice President Jones's suggestion, is there anybody who is opposed to the idea of voting on those two together? If there's anybody, I'll separate them, otherwise I'll put them together. Okay, so, so you'll get options A through F separately, and then G and H together. Mr. Morosky?
State of voting E's, are we going to refer to it as G or H?
I'm going to say the merged GH option.
I don't like that.
Well, we're just going to keep moving. Ms. Bolton? You can vote for it if you would like. I have a feeling nobody's going to vote for it because it's already done, but if that's where you'd like to spend one of your three votes, that's no problem. That's right. That's why we're, we already get three votes, that way there's no more than five. Okay? So think about your votes. Anybody need more time?
Need you to repeat what, I didn't understand quite what Ms. Bolton said. We agreed that one and two, A and B, or what?
Not A and B. If you look at above the top part of the page.
I, I got that. I thought she said, is that what she said?
That's what she said. She was just checking.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, so anybody who would like to vote for transportation, would you please raise your hand? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. I have a feeling that's one of them. Okay. Anybody who would like to vote for the levy, would you please raise your hand? One, two, three, four, five. Productive conflict is good. Anybody who would like to vote for staffing and HR, please raise your hand. Anybody who would like to vote for a smooth start to the school year, please raise your Anybody who would vote to, on committee realignment? Look at Eve. Okay, nothing there. Anybody who would like to vote for student safety and discipline disparities, please raise your hand. And then anybody who would like to vote on the merged GH option, please raise your All right, so with those votes, we have a very clear answer. We have three. So, sorry, we have the first two, and then the next three will consist of transportation, levy passage- levy passage, and then the merged GH option. Those will be the five we focus on between now and the 8th of November. There's one last final step here where I'd like to ask for a couple volunteers. You'll notice that in that what winning looks like by 1118 column, there are a bunch of missing pieces of information. Like it says percent of students with no more than one transfer. But there's no number for like what the winning actually is. I wanted to see if for each of these, we could have one board member volunteer. Like what number actually makes sense there for us to shoot for? And so I was going to see, would, is the question, or are you volunteering? Can I, can I guess that? So.
Volunteering.
Anybody else want to volunteer for transportation? Can you turn your mic on, Dr. Moffett?
My apologies. Can you explain to me why we're the one member?
It's a good point. I'm very open to that alternative. My thought was that it would just move a little bit more quickly, but if people would...
But I think you have...
Well, so hang on a second. I think where I think it's very important for us to get is it's, it's not just clear the category that we care about, but it's clear concretely what winning means, looks like. And so I think there are probably multiple ways to get there. We could absolutely have committees do it. We could absolutely have my original thought, which was just ask for volunteers. Can I just see, does anybody have a very strong feeling that it'd be one way or the other? Superintendent?
I just have a question. We're talking about transportation, right? So for that particular one, we know what Metro told us at this point, is that 100% of our students have no transfers or one transfer. So is that a metric that we could cover as a part of Cow?
Sure. Particularly if that's what you and the board, I mean, it's hard to get much better than that. But yeah, so I think, I am process agnostic. I just want there to be a clear process by which we get concrete about what winning is. And so I think the question I'd like to ask the group is, do people feel very strongly that it should be option A, we have individual people take this as next steps, or option B, it should be a committee? Vice President Jones?
I, I feel very strongly that when we have processes in place that are working, that we should keep that and not create another line of that kind of work. I believe that the administration group that has been working on it internally is continuing to do the work and looking at the metrics and all of that. But I still believe very strongly that the finance committee has also been doing that work side by side with them. And so my option, my preference would be to leave it that way unless, and then if there's a need, for example, for a member of that committee to meet separately at their request or whatever, they can decide that, how that works. But I'm just saying, keep that, keep that...
I think that certainly works for me. Is there any strong dissent from anybody? Otherwise, I think, yeah, Mrs. Weinberg?
I was just going to say that I agree that it should be kept with finance, but if there was someone else who wanted to, of course, volunteer, like I raised my hand, I would be willing to take that on as well.
Right.
I appreciate that, Mrs. Weinberg. So it sounds like what we'll do then is that we'll, we'll ask the finance committee to come back with the figures for A. I think that B, the levy, is pretty self-explanatory and doesn't need anything else. We need it to pass. That's what winning looks like. And then we do need some group then, some committee, to flesh out some of the figures on the merged GH option. And I have to be totally honest, I'm not exactly sure what committee that would be. Do you have an idea, Vice President Jones?
No, I'm in a different place. I'll ask my question later.
Okay. Is there a committee chair who's volunteering for their committee to figure that out?
Or, say that again, I'm sorry.
So we're looking at the merged GH option. So there's a little bit of work to be done to figure out what numbers go there. And what we did in the first case is refer it to the finance committee. And so the question I'm asking here is if we were to refer this to a committee, which committee is the right one? Mr. Craig?
Okay. I was just making a suggestion that since it was part of, and this is a little bit of a preview of what later discussions will be, as part of the governance training, you know, the next stage, once we deliver, once we come up with our goals and guardrails, will be taking those back to the community for their community engagement. And so I think over this next several months, we'll be doing that plus other community engagement. So I mean, I think maybe as a starting point, not necessarily as a place where it houses the entire time, is that that first stage might be the ones connected up with the governance as well as then, once we have a strategic plan, direction going, then that part of it as well as part of our community engagement, as Dr. Moffett said, we can assign that along the pathway. Doesn't necessarily have to be one person or the entirety of all engagements monitoring, but that maybe we set up different parts along the way over these next, was it, three months, to keep track of our different forms of engagement. That'll give us a better idea of what the number, what we should be, because I don't know that we would put that number out today.
Yeah. So I, just to kind of summarize, to make sure I'm hearing you correctly, so this is the idea that, let's say that when it comes to community engagement, we already have some really important year term work that's going to happen, which is that all board members are going to go to different community groups to get feedback on the draft goals and guardrails that we'll write together. So what you're suggesting, Mr. Craig, is that's the real win first. Let's do that and then determine if there needs to be more than that.
I think, well, so I was saying, I think that's a part of it. I don't know that we necessarily need to put a specific number to November's date. I think maybe what, maybe the better strategy would be to start with a number for the goals and guardrails, and then come up with a number also for the additional outreach we might be doing for other purposes, or ensuring that the administration is doing for various needs. Again, I know we have a couple things that we are planning. I know the superintendent has several things he sees planned out for making sure that everybody is on track and ready to go and are being present. So making sure that that part of it also is more established by us having those conversations and building those numbers as we go along. And then when we come back to our regular meetings, where we're discussing how we're doing on those paths, we can then make that assessment as to whether or not more needs to be done, less needs to be, or not less, but more needs to be done, or whether or not we've met those goals.
I think that certainly seems pretty reasonable to me. Any other discussion or concerns? Dr. Moffett?
So I'm wanting to volunteer to work with Agent P's because I'm already working with our treasurer, and I'm happy to, I don't know where that fits. I think I heard Brandon say the governance committee, like having them do part of that is what I heard. Maybe I didn't, I don't know. Then I also wanted to say that we have, we kind of have a levy committee already. Do we not? Everybody's looking at me looking.
No, keep going. Are you thinking with respect to B?
Yes. So I was thinking, we already really have that, and we already have a transportation. So if we had governance, and I'm happy to help, I would love to help with that, then we really already have like those three differentiated committees working on the priorities.
I think that sounds fine and a good way to move forward, frankly. Any last thoughts before we keep going? Vice President Jones?
I was just going to agree with what I think I heard Brandon, Mr. Craig say, just in terms of where we are now, and a lot of that is already built into the process. And down the road here, we may need a different kind of involvement, which is what then what I hear Board Member Moffett say. So again, I think for me, it's like, you know, assigning people to this, that, the other, and every, you know, I think that's a lot. But I think there are already some things in place that we have that we could utilize, which is what I think I heard Mr. Craig say.
I think that sounds good, and I agree with you. Any concerns before we move on to the next item? I appreciate everybody doing this, and I think what's going to be helpful about how we spent the last 20 minutes or so is, as we've done in past meetings, we'll be able to say, here are the things this board has decided together matter most over the next three months. Here's concretely how we're going to hold ourselves accountable to each other and to the public, and then check to make sure we're spending the majority of our time and energy and resources on those things that we collectively said are the ones that matter. So we'll move then to item E, and I need a motion to approve the minutes from special meeting July 18th and business meeting July 18th.
They'll move.
Thank you, Mr. Morosky. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Moffett. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved as presented. We do, on the agenda tonight, have what's written as a committee report. My understanding is that we have an update on the timing of that report from the committee's chair?
Yes. After reviewing the report, I noticed a pretty significant gap in the information, and rather than try to rush to get it done, I would like to defer the minutes until the next meeting, until we have a chance to correct it.
Sounds great. Thank you.
This is, you have that confused look. I'm talking about the minutes from the regular meeting of student achievement that occurred on August the 5th. Doesn't have anything to do with the committee structure meeting, if that's...
Any questions for the committee chair? Member Bolton?
Is there anything time sensitive about that?
No. There is nothing time sensitive about it at all.
Is it would be like, what is our next meeting would be the 12th of September or something like that?
Or...
Or would we be discussing it on the, under the new arrangement, possible new arrangement?
Possibly. But I, I mean, even if these minutes, once they get corrected, even if we present them on the 12th, it's still not going to create a time sensitive issue. I mean, it's, it's really just correcting the error and presenting it for approval. There's not, no action or anything to be taken around that.
Any other questions for committee chair and vice president? Okay, hearing none. We're going to keep moving. We're then on to item G, which is governance coaching next steps. And I'm excited to welcome a couple of guests we have this evening. Rob, do we have Leslie and her group? Hello, Leslie, how are you?
Hey, I'm well. Good to see you all.
Good to see you, too. For folks who are here and with us in person or who are watching at home, our board has been working for the last several months with a group of governance coaches from the Council of Great City Schools. Leslie is one of those coaches, and we're excited to spend a little bit of time with you this evening. Do you want to introduce your team?
Sure. We have tonight Ben Mackey and Rodney Jordan, who are both in the aspiring coach cohort. So they're going to give a little bit of their input after I give an update for you.
Great. So we'll turn it over to you then. Thank you very much.
Sure. Thank you all. So I just wanted to, this is a brief update. We're not going to get into any details of anything tonight, but we had asked the board, each of you individually, to submit lists of community groups and organizations to be engaged in the goals and guardrails writing process. We asked for you to submit your entries for that by last Monday, the 8th, as well as submit your feedback for the sessions themselves and for any potential opportunities to hear from the community, any other. So what we did was create a master list of community engagement and outreach by consolidating each of your individual list. Everything that you had sent to us, we put in that list. We also included the engagement that was done around the superintendent's search process last November. So what we now are going to do is we're going to, tomorrow, I believe we're going to email that to you tomorrow, we'll give you that master list that has, what we'll do is, when we're looking at next steps for that, you're going to go back through and you're going to make sure that we have included everything that you sent to us. We did try to take out duplicates where that was, where we had that, and to categorize them by what sort of type of organization they were. But you'll get that tomorrow to look at, and we'll need each of you to, to look at that thoroughly. So whoever here is on this list, the list is real, whoever's on the list will likely be included in this process, so whomever is not on it likely will not be. So if you, if there's a group that you wanted to be included, we make sure, it is up to you all to make certain that they're on the list. Any additions to the list that be communicated to Cindy, and we'll make sure she's going to send the email out, by Monday, August the 22nd. So if there's anybody that, you'll have time to review that, if there's anybody that we missed, please let us know. And another thing to keep in mind is that because these are, these engagement sessions are going to be board-hosted events, there's going to be a certain amount of support, in-person, site arrangement, so where you're going to have this, Zoom support if applicable, interpretation, et cetera, for these engagement sessions. So it may not be realistic to host a giant number of them if we're tiny, small groups. So just something to keep in mind as you're looking at the list. So again, any additions that are made to it by August 22nd, we can look at adding those in, making sure that they're not cross-purposes with something else. And then we will provide you a forum where you can sign up. And what we're going to do, that will be, sign up will be done hopefully by August the 26th. And we're going to ask each of you to sign up for, for these meetings. And if these meetings don't have two of you who are signed up for each one, then we'll assume that it was not a priority. And there will be full instructions in the email given to you. But the point of this again is for the board members to hear what these different groups of community that you prioritize, what their, what their thinking is. So we're also going to be creating a draft community engagement and outreach script using input from you all. And the draft script will be provided to you by the end of this week. We will be asking that you review the script and get it back to us by Monday, the 29th. So you'll have an extra week on that. And again, send any feedback you have to Cindy. She'll be putting all that together. The instructions about reviewing that script will be included as well. So anyway, we're going to be sending you a couple of emails I need you to pay attention to, and that is actually going to, that's going to be the basis for outlining your work in the weeks ahead. And I just wanted, if there are any questions right now, please let me know, but I wanted to give both Ben and Rodney a chance to weigh in on their experiences with this.
So Leslie, just to summarize swiftly, the most important short-term next step is board members should look for an email that'll have a list of here are all the groups that were recommended for stakeholder engagement, and then to reply back by Monday if anybody looks missing.
Yes.
Is that the key next step?
That's the key next step, and for the script.
To just to look for the script or to send feedback on the script?
Well, look for the script, make sure that you received it, and then to follow instructions around what, what you need to, you know, if there's something you want to change in the script or some advice you want to have to, on that. And what I wanted to do was, Ben, if you wanted to weigh in, sorry, Ben, Lindy, I have to, Ben's, is there any further question that you have in terms of the next steps? Anybody?
Not for me, but do my colleagues on the board have other questions for Leslie? Ms. Bolton?
Yes, just a question. Thank you so much. I basically put whatever groups I came up with as, and I don't know the right term, but I put them all on one sheet. And I'm sure that based upon how you understand the differing engagement where we are participating or whatever, and then they as a group are holding their own engagement process, I, I felt that I should defer to y'all as to which should be which, because I couldn't really discern which groups, although practically and from a, from a logistical standpoint, for example, the NAACP could be hosting their own engagement, but some other organizations may find that more difficult. So I would be interested in being able to see the two lists, as again, I only submitted one, where we would be part of that or what have you versus running. I think it would be great for us to be able to see both lists as you see it and in what is more practical from your understanding. is more practical from your understanding. That would be helpful to me, to even come up with more if necessary, but that would be helpful.
And just for the public to understand, we did ask the board members to submit two different types of answers to us or groups to us. One would be groups that would be categorized as engagement, which is where the board hosted a meeting, and these individuals would come, these individuals or groups would come to the board hosting a meeting. Community outreach would be where the board members went to a meeting that was previously on the books, so that someone else is hosting a meeting and you get on their agenda. I'll let you know that what we did with the list, though, is we put everything together. So we consolidated your engagement and your outreach. Those are, you can still see which is which, how y'all submitted to those to us. But there were some instances where one of you had something down as one and one had the other way. But that is going to be for you all to work out. So we're happy to weigh into it. When you get, when you see the list, you'll, I think you'll understand. But yeah, so that won't be as, I don't think that will be as confusing to see the list. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Bolden. Other board members have questions for Leslie? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and so I just want, if I could get Rodney, if you wouldn't mind, I just want to get you to weigh in a little bit. Rodney has been through this process a while back. And just weigh in about the importance of the homework, sort of, you know, like putting this list together and just, you know, like where the rubber meets the road with this process.
Yeah. Good evening. Good evening, everyone. Hope you can hear me okay. I appreciate the opportunity to share with you some of the experiences that I've had. I can see from the work that you've already started that there are quite a bit of entries in your list. And as Leslie was saying, I think that it is important that you really are intentional about trying to review the list, to make sure that you're having as much geographic diversity, as much inclusion as, you know, as your community represents. So you'll get a chance to review that, making sure that you complete the list. I will say that, as was mentioned earlier, if you don't get the opportunity to get your information in by the deadline, then, you know, that really will be on the board as a whole or the individual board members. So it is important that each of you really give your all in trying to make sure that you are ensuring that the organizations and individuals and groups that you want to make sure are represented are part of that list in meeting those deadlines. The other thing I'll just mention, and then I'll yield to my colleague Ben, just going back to the question earlier, in my experience, whether it was the community engagement, which were the meetings or the listening sessions that the board was coordinating and hosting, or whether it was the outreach, on the outreach side, while another organization, you may get on their agenda or their meeting, it's still the two board members that are facilitating the listening session during that time. So I think it's important as you reach out to community groups to get on their list, that you are explaining to them that you're asking for a block of time on their agenda for the two board members to facilitate the listening session, as one would moderate and one would do note-taking and so forth. It's not the organizations themselves facilitating and you just being there listening. You are doing the facilitation on, at the courtesy of somebody else's agenda that they've allowed you to come and...
Thank you, Rodney.
Rodney.
Appreciate that. Ben Mackey, would you like to give a little information around scripting?
Yeah, absolutely. Good evening, trustees. Thank you for having us. My name is Ben Mackey. I've been through this process both as a board member but also as a staff member. So I've gotten to see it from a lot of different sides. I want to commend you all on the comprehensive list that you put together. As you all will look through it, and you'll have a lot of different groups and ideas of engagement, and that is phenomenal. But that's going to result in a lot of information and data. And so that's where the scripting that you review is going to become really important, because when you go to these meetings, you are going to want consistency of questions to make sure that the data you're getting from each of these is actually going to be really helpful in helping you all see the broad picture and not just what one group said over here or one group said over there. Because what's going to happen is you all will devise and have a process in which you will be submitting the notes at the end of each meeting. And if you've asked the same questions in the same ways, you're going to get the same, you know, format of responses that you'll be submitting there. And then what's going to happen, along with Council of Great City Schools' help, is to be able to look at all of that different qualitative data, things that people have said, verbalized, et cetera. But we're going to be able to take that and really look for trends across all of these different meetings. So you will see the same trends that are coming up over and over and over from the various parts of your community. And so that's going to really give you all a lot of really interesting and meaningful data with which to be able to set the goals and guardrails that are most important in front of mind for you and your community. If the script isn't consistent, if it goes a lot of different directions, you might get a whole lot of disjointed pieces of information that aren't going to help you get the broad picture. And so by keeping the script, making sure that it does capture what you're trying to get, so that's why it's going to be really important for you all to review those questions, make sure it's getting to the heart of the goals and the guardrails, then we're going to be able to turn around a much higher-quality product around the trends that we heard across the board there.
And Leslie, do you mind if I add one other, one other thing?
Sure.
You know, part of the process, you know, you'll be strongly encouraged to work together in teams of two and to try to get outside of your normal exposure area. So if, you know, whatever, you have districts, you want to make sure you get outside of your district. If you are already involved in a certain groups, we want to make sure that you go and be a part of a listening session with groups that you aren't necessarily involved in. And that gives the board as a whole that exposure to the community, and it also gives the community exposure to all the board members. So that'll be something else to consider as you sign up to do at least one listening session with each board member as a pair.
Yeah, thank you, Rodney, for putting that finer point on it. Again, we are going to ask that two of you go out to every single meeting and that you switch up, so that each of you are working with each of your colleagues at one of those meetings, so that you're not always going out with the same, with the same partner. So again, we're going to apologize, there's going to be an email coming tomorrow that will be the list, which will give you an opportunity to review. And then by the end of the week, we'll have the initial script drafted, so you can look at that as well. And there will be a weekend in between these things, so you're not having to turn it around during a business week. So, any further questions about that, please let me know. And I do, I would just want to mention, I know that Ben, Chair Lindy, is polling the board for dates to meet for drafting the goals and guardrails, and we're looking very much forward to getting that calendared. So any further questions on this process?
Board members?
I know you have plenty, but any tonight?
Ms. Bolden?
Yeah, I have a question, a comment. First of all, everybody's been very helpful, particularly Mr. Mackey, in even the preliminary filing of whatever it was I was having to file. It took two board staff members and Mr. Mackey and me, which is a comment on myself as to even fill out the evaluation. So it's great to meet Mr. Mackey, and appreciate it. The other piece is, actually, very, very, and that was serious too, I assure you, but very seriously, it's important for Great City Schools and the board. I know the board doesn't have to be reminded, but in this timeframe, we also are going to the community regarding a renewal of a levy. And much of what we do has to not only be helpful to our governance, but needs to also make sure that the community is aware of the levy and also should be used as an opportunity to get input that would be helpful from the community regarding the renewal, which has been passed once, and I believe already renewed twice. So there is great support, but there is an additional part of this, and that has to be priority one for our children and in our staff and the district. So I think we need to keep that in mind. And I'll just say that as finance chair as well as a long-term CPS person.
I think that makes a lot of sense, Member Bolden. I think before we totally lose Leslie and our friends at the council, I think Mr. Craig was going to make one other announcement about some things that people will receive soon around data on our district and what to be thinking about for our Saturday or Friday session.
Yeah, and I think Leslie started to touch on this a little bit, but that you'll, you should have received from Ben already a poll for us to complete so that we can kind of schedule a date. The goal really is for us to be able to sit down on one day and really tackle the goals and guardrails, so that we are not doing it for like five days in little pieces. But the reason we want to do this is we want to be able to take a complete idea to the public and be able to get their feedback and their information and their thoughts about, you know, what they think about the goals and guardrails that we have come up with as a draft, but additionally, what other things that we haven't yet put together. That leads us into that next conversation, which is, once we have that feedback from them, being able to reassemble and start that next process of this, which is really putting together those final versions of the goals and guardrails. And so we've been continuing to meet weekly with Leslie and all the folks over with the council. And so it's been, you know, our goal is to really get a timeline together so that we can do this quicker than, and hopefully have this done in a more timely manner than sometimes always is easy to do. And so hopefully everyone has received it from Ben and can give us that feedback so we can get that next process part going. And then once we have those goals and guardrails, as Leslie was mentioning, we would then be able to go in and have those conversations with our various community partners. I know we looked a little bit at the list, and it is a really comprehensive list of people, some of which I was like, oh, yeah, I forgot about them. Oh, yeah, that person too. Oh, shoot, I should have thought of that one. So I think when you all see the list, you'll think there's, I'm sure there'll be some folks we all forgot, but probably not many.
Yes, Vice President Jones.
I just want to add something to the fact, to the, around the doodle poll, and probably, you know, there are like 14 or 17 dates on there. But I think ideally, we'd like to do it as soon as we can, you know, so that we don't push this back any further. And I really, really do understand, personally, I understand people's schedules and that kind of thing. But if there is any way we can do it sooner than later, I think the better off we'll be in terms of positioning ourselves to do the work that we have in front of us and not pushing back the entire, all the work that we're doing with Council of Great City Schools. So I'm just asking everybody, when you look at it, you know, change some things. I had to change some, I'll be willing to change some things around if I have to, but the sooner we get it scheduled, the better off we'll be.
Thanks, Vice President Jones. And I'll just add, I'm grateful for everyone's engagement in this process. And personally, just why I get so motivated by this is, on the other side of it, this is how we can actually hold our administration accountable for children and for real measurable outcomes for kids. And that's, I will just speak for myself, that's why I wanted to be a school board member. And so I'm grateful for the time and energy people are spending on this and excited to keep moving. So thank you, Leslie. Thank you, Ben. Thank you. Your colleague's name I can't see, and I've forgotten. Is it Rodney?
Rodney Jordan, yes.
Rodden. Thank you, Rodney.
If I can make one final comment on what you just said, it is a way to hold yourselves accountable, the board accountable, for your work and what you are doing for student outcomes. And I just want to encourage each and every one of you, you have the Student Outcomes Focus Governance Manual, your field guide that you received at our workshop. If you need an electronic link to that, feel free to ask for that. That document is the best homework you can do around this entire process. So whenever you have, you know, a doubt about anything, look there or call one of us. But this is your work. We are helping you facilitate it. It is your work, and we really encourage you to put as much into it as you want to get out of it, and really respect the fact that you're going through. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. So we will move right along then to item H on our resolution, excuse me, on our agenda, which is called Resolutions. Mr. Morosky, I believe you have the first one.
Thank you so much. We had introduced this at the last meeting in the presentation of the policy minutes. So my pleasure to introduce a resolution amending board policy, 9125, social media policy for district employees. I present the resolution as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Vice President Jones. Any discussion? Ms. Wagner, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Joan?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. We're going to have a second resolution from Member Bolden.
Thank you. With the help of my, 9126, social media, I submit this approval, their policy, but also my colleague, Member, for putting this forward. Crucial, especially as we approach the new...
Thank you, Member Bolden. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Weinberg. Any discussion on this resolution? Mr. Morosky?
Just one. This is a repeat, but for folks who didn't hear it the last time, this is a pretty unique policy nationally speaking. And Stephanie Scott and General Counsel Dan Hoying's office did a ton of work to put it together. I mean, with our, obviously, you know, bookends or whatever, but I just wanted to give that kudos one more time and remind people this is a pretty forward-thinking, new thing. Believe it or not, social media policy for students, but it is.
Thank you, Mr. Morosky. Other discussion? Dr. Moffett?
I was going, my board member colleague beat me to it. I just wanted to make sure that we publicly thanked Dan and Stephanie, and then also Carrie and Wayne, because they have helped with some input on this. And this is innovative. I've been speaking to people around the city, other board members and other people in different districts. And this is trend-setting, as CPS always does. We are the trend setters. And so the intention was to draft policy that would give some support to how social media is impacting our students and our schools in discipline. And so I think we were able to really do that, and thanks to my colleagues as well. But I wanted to formally thank everybody. This was actually a longer process than just a month. It's been months. And so thank you to everybody that had input.
Thank you, Dr. Moffett. Member Bolden?
Yes, now that it's been motioned and seconded, and I'm hoping for approval, I would like the board to consider just one addition. As a person that spent 36 years in the classroom with teenagers and enjoyed almost every moment of it, I would, I would see if, I think in number five to the chair and to my colleague, Dr. Moffett, and I know this is not necessarily a protected class, as some of these are within this list, physical appearance is a real issue as well for negative, mean-spirited things that kids might say about one another or about other folks. So I would just submit, and at least for a possible, and I apologize for not sharing that idea before, but it just only recently occurred to me under certain circumstances. So I would like to suggest that as a revision, or I guess technically as an amendment, as a motion maker, if my seconder would agree to it, it would be a friendly amendment to that section.
Ms. Bolden, you made the original motion, offering an amendment, a friendly amendment to your own motion.
My own darn amendment.
So you're okay with it.
I'm very friendly with myself.
And then, Mrs. Weinberg, as the seconder, are you also supportive of the friendly amendment?
That's fine.
Okay. Any, any...
We're all, Weinberg.
So the motion that's on the floor now has that amendment. Any questions or discussion about either the amendment or the original?
...of that a bit. This, that actually is a very serious thing among teenagers.
Yes.
I would, I just, it's just remarkable, the work that's been done on the original, but for that revision, I think it will complete the work.
Yeah, I think that's, for what it's worth, fully agree. Any other discussion or questions? Ms. Wagner, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Morosky?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. So moving to item three, I'm going to provide just a little bit of context on this one, and then I'm happy to make the motion. But part... on this one, and then I'm happy to make the motion. But part of our contract with our new superintendent involves a process where, once a year, the board and the superintendent meet and decide on how we will communicate and work together, the language in the contract. I was very excited to see this in the superintendent's contract, because it feels very healthy and important to me that there be clear expectations on all sides about how we communicate and work together. And you could expect this board to do the same thing a year from now. We are a little late. The contract did say 6:15, and it's 8:15. But I think late in this context is better than never. And so board members will have seen, and the public can see, the resolution that has a series of agreements. And you can see on each item how it aligns to our existing board policies and bylaws. So those are, at the end of each item, they're also listed at the bottom of the first page, and they are listed with the actual language on the second page. Our general counsel has kindly reviewed this document to make sure that what we're proposing is in line with existing board bylaws. And this is a document that I'll just chair has taken some work, and I'm not sure if there will be universal agreement on all of it or not. But I'd like to introduce this motion and then ask for a second.
Second.
Thank you, Vice President Jones. Any discussion? Dr. Moffett?
I think it's, I've had the opportunity to speak with my colleagues. I do not think that, as written, this is clear and concise enough. I think that we need to step, we need to have a conversation about expectations prior to communication. So I like some of these, but not all. And that's just been consistently my point. I think that I liken it to saying, don't speed, but there's been no definition of what that speeding limit is. And I think that we need to have expectations established first. A couple of these, we've kind of outlined, but they have not been followed. And I think part of that is because expectations are not clear. And so that's just, it's just my opinion.
Thank you, Dr. Moffett. Other discussion? Vice President Jones?
Yes, being one of those colleagues that Dr. Moffett spoke with, I want to say that I think it's a good document. And I think, you know, one of the things that I would say to her point about, it's not clear about expectations, is that when we submit resolutions, we submit them as frameworks, you know, and the work, the work happens as a result of passing the resolution, if you understand what I'm saying. And I think that we do, there are, we have to create some opportunities to continue to dialogue about the expectation. And I truly believe that. And I think we'll get there. But I do think that what we have today is a good framework for that, for those conversations.
Thank you, Vice President Jones. Other discussion? Member Bolton?
Yes, thank you. I appreciate the comment that the doctor has mentioned. In its first draft, and in fairness to the public, this has been multiple drafts through the work of the board and the superintendent. And I'm comfortable, as I spoke with one board member today about this, I'm comfortable with the one through six, as it now reads. And I was incredibly uncomfortable with it when it started. So I think it's reflective of both alignment to existing bylaws, and I feel that it reflects the differing views among the seven board members, as well as the comfort level of the superintendent. So I'm happy with these six. What I would do is, I think I have miscommunicated to the president about what to add as kind of the footnote piece. And I think that it might, it might take care of some of the discomfort that perhaps this member Moffett might have. We did include, rightfully so, the policies or what we call bylaws. For the benefit of the public, there are like 350 policies, if I'm correct, Mr. Chairman, and the first group of them talk about our own governance, and then the next group of them talk about the administration. And I would feel comfortable, and we don't have to do this tonight, but I do think it might alleviate some of the concern if we do include the seven of the first eight for administration, we have talked about and shared, where it talks about the relationship that we have with our superintendent and the board. And so I would suggest that probably, instead of listing, we have the footnotes for each of the six that come from our bylaws, but the actual policies for administration, which have been around it for a while, need to be, I think, am I looking at the right ones?
You're looking at the next-to-last version, and the last version has listed at the bottom.
I see 1230, I see 1110. I'm concerned about the 18 and 115. I think there might be...
Do some look missing?
My understanding would be, it would be 1100, 1110, 1210, 1220, 1230, 1230, 01, and 1240. Those are seven of the first eight policies that speak to the administration. They do not differ from what is written here. What's written here is very much in alignment with board policy, but we have established policies about the relationship that we have with one another and the relationship with the administration. I think we've sent those around for a couple of weeks. I would just suggest that perhaps with the inclusion of those, maybe that would, that would take care of some of the concerns, because this is an important group of six. And I think it's part of not only aligning with what has been, but it also aligns with what we want to be in the future. And I think it also, by adding those policies, speaks well to the adopted policies of this board that superintendents have lived with and we've lived with. And I think it's, my comfort level with them is that those were adopted, and I believe, in 1220 or something like that. They're recent. They're not, God forbid, like World War II transportation policies that we've had to deal with. But I would just suggest, and it doesn't have to happen tonight, but I do think that that would reassure and maybe get us closer to a 7-0 vote, because I think we're at a 6-1 vote.
I'm happy to include them as a friendly amendment. It was my intention to make sure we got all of them. There may have been a couple that got missed, but we'll figure it out.
And I think, I'd like to just say that what Ms. Bolton is saying is exactly what I was saying, except it took her longer.
I will let the two of you start that out. So, any last discussion before we hold our vote? Mr. Morosky, Craig, Mrs. Weinberg?
I'm bringing my egg timer, I swear to God.
Okay, Mrs. Wagner, you have one more?
I just want to clarify. I think this is a good document. I think that this is step two, and we need step one. I think that we need to set expectations first. We need to, there's a misalignment there. And then, then this becomes applicable. So I'm not saying, I don't want to take anything away from the work that's been done in getting here. I just think that this is the second step in the process and not the first. But it's just my opinion. I don't have a seven.
Thank you, Dr. Moffett. People do get to go twice. Does anybody else have anything they want to say or share or ask? Ms. Wagner, would you call the role, please?
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
No.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. We're going to move to item four, which is a big deal and a lot of work. Our Vice President Jones is going to share that resolution.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lindy. I'd like to introduce a resolution restructuring the work of the Board of Education Standing Committees. And once introduced, I would like the opportunity to give the summary and discussion, and then whatever other discussion, what other people want to discuss is fine too. So, whereas the four chairs of the Board of Education Standing Committees met at a duly-notice public meeting on August 11, 2022, for the purpose of discussing the board committee structure and how board committees could most effectively and efficiently be used to support the work of the board and the district going forward, and whereas the board requested a resolution summarizing the recommendations discussed during the meeting, and whereas the board reaffirms the committee structure established at the annual organizational meeting in January 2022 with the changes described below, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education reaffirms the committee structure established at its annual organizational meeting in January 2022 and adopts the following recommendation. One, the Policy and Equity Committee and Budget, Finance, and Growth Committee will continue to meet as scheduled with the same responsibilities as outlined in Board Policy 0150. Number two, the Health and Safety Committee will continue to meet as scheduled for the remainder of the 2022 calendar year, at which time, the board will reevaluate whether to adjust the committee's responsibilities for future years. Number three, the board resolves that the responsibilities of the Student Achievement and District Instructional Performance Committee are the purview of all the members of the Board of Education. The full board, in alignment with the superintendent, will consider matters related to student achievement and instructional performance at its monthly Committee of the Whole meetings. Effectively, effective immediately, Committee of the Whole meetings will be extended by one half hour, as needed, to facilitate presentations and discussions related to student achievement and instructional performance. Previously scheduled student achievement meetings are canceled for the remainder of the 2022-2023 year. I respectfully submit this resolution for approval.
Thank you, Vice President Jones. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Member Bolton, and we'll return it back to Vice President Jones.
Yes, I wanted to have our public viewers and our community and everybody here in the audience to really understand kind of how we came to this. If you recall, in the beginning of the agenda, where we were talking about our priorities, and one of those priorities was committee realignment. We have been in discussion with Council of Great City Schools, and I must say that on the very first meeting that we had in an all-day session, this topic came up. And it came up as a result of a question that was posed. And that question was, what is the board's top priority? What is our main, what is our focus? What is our intention? Why are we board members? And the answer to that, which I think we reached consensus about that, is to improve student achievement and student outcomes. And so the work of the Student Achievement and District Instructional Performance Committee, this committee has been in place for, at least since I've been here, for seven years. I think what we were seeing as part of that discussion and what we began to talk about as part of our governance training is, is this the best alignment of the work of the board? And when I talk about the best alignment, I'm talking about how we align with achieving student outcomes and the work that the superintendent is doing. And one of the things that I have noticed since I've been on, been the chair of the Student Achievement, number one, is that most of what we have been doing for this year and last year has been mostly updates around curriculum pieces and information that required us to look at data. And one of the things that we've heard very clearly from our superintendent is that she values the use of data in terms of driving decisions, and that we, as a district, were working hard to make sure that the data is accurate and making sure that we can use the data in the processes for making decisions about what drives student outcomes. So that is really the reason why we made a decision to change the way the Student Achievement Committee works. So it is the interest of the board that the student achievement reports be given to the full board, and that we have access to all the information at the same time. We're processing the information at the same time. We're in a room together where we can really focus our efforts on what that means for the good of the district. So I wanted to say that in the beginning of discussion and open to hearing other things that the full board wants to discuss. I also want to say that at the meeting that was held on August 11, it was recommended that we have one more meeting to sort of make that transition. What I did was, I went back, as, you know, I followed up with sort of thinking about the recommendation. I followed up and looked at our work plan for the year, and every single agenda item on there are things that we have already talked about in the year. So to me, it didn't make sense for us to have a meeting where we're repeating ourselves after having updates like two months ago on some of this stuff. So I am suggesting, as part of this, in terms of implementation and moving forward, that we not have that meeting on the second, but that we use the time, and I am happy to talk with the superintendent, and if my committee members want to join that, we can do that just to have a conversation with superintendent as a way of transitioning that to the Committee of the Whole. So it really is the preference of what the board wants to happen with that, but very comfortable that that transition can occur without us losing traction anywhere. And also, I think it's very important that we communicate on our website about the change with this standing, previously standing committee. So I'll leave it at that and hope for approval.
Thank you, Vice President Jones. Any other discussion, questions? Okay, Ms. Wagner, would you call the role, please?
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. Wonderful. Thank you very much, Vice President Jones, and thank you, everybody. We're moving on from resolutions to item I, which is the Superintendent of Schools section. Mrs. Weinberg and superintendent, do we have any retirements to announce this evening?
For certificated, we actually have three names that I'm going to call. So we have DeRain Forest, a teacher at North Avondale. We have Everett T. Harris, a social worker from North Avondale. And we also have Nancy J. Thomas, a teacher at Covedale. As we move into our civil service personnel, I think there are 11 names. We have Michael Bogan, a paraprofessional at Withrow, James Covington, a custodian with facilities, Maia Fletcher, a security assistant from Woodward, Melvina George, a paraprofessional from Fairview, Thea Higgins, a lunchroom manager from Pleasant Ridge, Susan Keys, a senior support specialist from Fairview, Dennis Kidd, a paraprofessional from Aiken, Angela Redding, a custodian from Woodward, Sandra Romero, a senior support specialist from Mount Washington, Teresa Underwood, a paraprofessional from Mount Erie, and last but not least, Edward S. White, a custodian from Pleasant Hill. We want to thank them for their years of service and their dedication to our students, and we wish them well.
Thank you, Mrs. Weinberg. Do we have a motion to accept the superintendent's recommendations?
Let's move.
Thank you, Mr. Morosky. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Moffett. Any discussion around the superintendent's recommendations? Treasure Wagner?
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. Do we have a recommendation to approve the revised treasurer's report?
Let's move.
Thank you, Vice President Jones. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Craig. Any questions or discussion? Member Bolton?
Thank you very much. This is really more of a clerical issue, not a substantive issue, that I want to address if we could. A couple of things. First and foremost, the investment report that is attached is, should be passed tonight, and indeed, finance. Normally, it kind of goes through finance first, but the calendar just didn't work for us at this time. So to the finance members, we'll have a chance, and I So to the finance members, we'll have a chance, and I would encourage you to review it so that we can ask any follow-up questions at finance. It just got to board earlier, but appreciate the work and the submission by the treasurer. Second, another clerical issue that I have is that we did receive the initial treasurer's report, and there was a revision in the contract chart that many of you, some of you may have seen, and it dealt with a contract regarding this fantastic superintendent has regarding being present. I would just like to point out as future, as we go into future efforts, to remind the treasurer's office that it's important, and anybody on staff that takes this incredible responsibility of getting this stuff ready, be it the board or the superintendent's folks or the treasurer's office, that when there is a revision, when something is struck, it needs to be duly noted as being part of the revision. And very frankly, it probably shouldn't have been on in the first place because we have already invested our confidence in the superintendent, I mean, excuse me, in the treasurer, and of course, the superintendent too, but the treasurer for the treasurer's report to contract totals of 50% of $50,000, being not necessarily part of what we adopt, which might go to the issue of consent agenda, I know the president's interested in that as I am. But just to make that shorter, a revision needs to show what struck as well as what's added, and more particularly, to be careful about those things that are in initially that didn't need to be included in the first place. So maybe the treasurer will respond, but this doesn't happen very often, but just to make sure it was a little bit of confusion for me.
Thank you, Member Bolton. Treasurer Wagner, is there any comment at all?
Yeah, just wanted to apologize for that, and I will certainly duly note any other removals. So you know this is a new format that we're trying to develop to show the board the multi-year contracts. And as we're perfecting the, and to convert from a development of a manual treasurer's report into an electronic treasurer's report, we're still tweaking some of the logic, and this is something that should have not been included because it was well within my purview to authorize up to $50,000. It was a revision less than $10,000. And so I apologize for confusing, but we're still tweaking and we'll make it better. Thank you.
I would only add, Mr. President, that no one has been more transparent about sharing information than the treasurer over any number of years. So we appreciate the continued work, but again, it's important to do this as we best can.
Thanks, Member Bolton. Yeah, and thank you, Treasurer Wagner. Any other discussion, questions around the treasurer's report before we vote? Okay, Treasurer Wagner?
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
Ms. Weinberg?
Yes.
President Lindy?
Yes. Okay, we are all the way through Part 1 of our agenda and moving into Part 2. We don't have any board matters tonight. Do we have any inquiries or updates? I think from Mr. Hoying, we're going to have one about the preschool promise board member recommendation from us. Well, he's making his way up here if anybody has a different one. And Dan, if I called you up here at the wrong time, you can tell me, and I apologize. We're good? Thanks.
Yes, thank you. Good evening. We've been notified by the Preschool Promise Board that one of the board's delegates to the Preschool Promise Board, Marcia Foutel, her term expires at the end of September. There's been a recommendation from the administration to renew her for a second term. She's eligible for a second three-year term. Wanted to let the board know that, and if absent any objection from the board, we would prepare a resolution for you to consider on September 12.
Any questions for Dan on this front? Member Bolton?
I have that as a question, and I know that she's a representative, we have multiple representatives representing the board that community organizations want a superintendent if indeed that is who the NAACP is interested in recommending for another term.
Yes, and I was going to add, thank you, Board Member Bolton. This is the representative for the NAACP, and based on the information that we have, they would like for this candidate to remain as a part of the board.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hoying. Other questions?
I do have one.
Dr. Moffett?
She does want to continue, is that right?
I understand that she does, yes.
That's a good question.
Talking all around, I'm like, well, does she want to keep going? Okay, so I want to make sure.
Very good question. Other inquiries or updates?
Yes.
Vice President Jones?
I have one question, one inquiry, and one sort of update. We have a tax levy on the ballot. Who comprises the tax levy committee? I don't know.
Vice President Jones, I'm not sure either. I've been invited to a series of meetings on this topic, but the, I don't think the first one's happened yet to my knowledge. Treasurer Wagner?
We've had a couple initial meetings with Yen Sut Moller and Superintendent Wright, myself, Ms. Sellers, Dr. Turner from CAS, Jeff Crystal from CAS, and a few board members have come and gone. Bolton, Ms. Moffett? Did I miss anybody else? Okay. Just initially, like, what's the meeting cadence going to be? Who should be included? And then we kind of broke for the summer because everybody was traveling, couldn't get it together. So we're meeting again, I believe, this week.
Thank you. I just needed to know who was on, and thank you.
Do you, Treasurer Wagner, do you need more board members, or do you need something formal, or like we have a clear set group, or is the current setup working okay for everyone?
It's working okay for me. I don't know. The other board members would like to chime in that have been there?
Sure, others? Anyone? If it's not broke, let's not fix it. If it's working fine, then I think we just keep going. Dr. Moffett?
Let me just say, you know, I think it was kind of an inquiry meeting for me, and then I didn't think it was set that this was the final group of people. But because we do have restrictions on the number of board members that we can have in one area, speaking of business, in one space, we're limited to four. I said four, four. And so what I suggested is that perhaps we have rotation, so that if someone else does want to attend, that they can. But we do have at least two, and I think you were out of town, Ben, because there were going to be three. So I'm happy to cycle that on and off for the next few months. The task is very important, it's about the levy. So I think we hadn't decided definitively that it would be those set people.
Yeah.
That's great. Vice President Jones?
Yeah, my only, my final comment on that was, I wasn't, it's fine. I mean, the committee composition is fine if those are the people who want to be on it. I just, it was getting, it's getting late. I just wanted to know who it was, and also to make sure that as plans roll out, I'm assuming there's going to be opportunity for folks, different folks, to be involved in securing levy endorsements and things like that. So that's why I asked the question. That's all.
That's great. I just want to, just to confirm, sorry, Ms. Bolton, go ahead.
Yes, to my knowledge, there's only been one of the meetings that has included any board members. And the other has included certain administration, the only administration that's even allowed to discuss it based upon the coast agreement they've met. And it is important that all board members are going to be having to do important assignments, especially as it pertains to community councils and other organizations and endorsements. And I'm, to the vice president's point, I think we are behind, especially in these challenging times. So I do know that a couple of the meetings got canceled because we have a very proactive superintendent that is scheduling a number of things that are just as valid or more valid even. I know that the safety committee, the safety town hall was, and indeed, we would encourage the people that are running the levy to be more aware of our district calendar.
I think the thing I want to just push on for a second is I want to make sure that if we continue with the current state, that it's going to work okay to get you the support you need from the board for the levy. It sounds like the answer to that is yes. I would just ask that if the answer is ever, we're not sure, let me know, and I'd like to make sure we get some designated people who will all, I don't think it'll be hard. I think all of us are ready to throw in anything that's needed for this, but it sounds like the current setup is working okay unless I'm hearing that wrong.
I would concur, Board President. And also, I would share that after our next meeting, which actually is next week, is our next meeting, at that point, we will be able to really begin to engage the board around the additional support that's needed there. And one of the things that I was thinking about today as we were talking about the conversations around engagement, this would also be a wonderful time to also engage around the levy at the same time, as the board is engaging with a variety of community and community stakeholders. And so we kind of have our individual marching orders, and so, you know, I as the CEO have started that work on my end, that wouldn't necessarily be work that you would see on the other end. So we know that it's by next week, once we do our meeting next week, I think we will be able to provide the board with some additional information.
That sounds good. Other, thank you, Superintendent. Other inquiries, same topic or new topic?
No, this is a different topic.
Yeah, Vice President Jones?
Yeah, I had a sort of an update, but I just wanted to share with the board that every year around this time, OSBA sends out a request for the board to assign or vote for a delegate to their delegate assembly, which is held during the OSBA Capitol Conference in November. We usually do this around the second meeting in September. So our staff gave me a copy of the resolution that will appear September 12 for approval. Last year, because I served, I was appointed as that delegate, being a representative of OSBA, and I am very interested in continuing, doesn't mean that, you know, if somebody else is interested and we vote on it, that's fine, but I'm just putting it out there. I would be, certainly be interested in being the delegate, and then we will also need an alternate so that if something happens and I'm not able to go, that delegate would serve. So it will appear, I think if there's a person, anybody who's interested, you can either express it now, or you can send it to the staff to add to the, when we get ready to vote, that would be fine. But September 12 is when we will vote on that. No, we're not going to, no, I wasn't, we were going to put it in the form of a resolution. But do we need a motion to just, I don't think we need a motion, do we?
I think it's a resolution.
It's in the resolution for vote, like if we only have two people or one person, it would just go in the resolution and be, we don't need the motion.
Thanks, Vice President Jones. Dr. Moffett, that answers your question?
Yes, I know we spoke earlier about, did you, you were nominating yourself or a resolution, and so I know every one of us was invited to attend that conference. So what you're, just for the public, what you're saying is that you're going to be there anyway because you are a part of OSBA. We additionally need a delegate, and you are wanting to serve in that position, right?
I am wanting to serve.
As the delegate.
As the delegate.
Although you are already, so I was just, we were talking earlier about, do you need a motion to be nominated for that?
Right.
You're saying we don't.
I'm saying we don't, and that's because when I talked to staff, they had, they told me, reminded me that we do it every year. That was the only difference.
Great. Thank you both. Other inquiries or updates? Ms. Bolton?
I have an update and an inquiry. The update will be, as some board members know, and also general counsel knows and president knows, I am submitting and have already shared a resolution regarding the continuation of our relationship with Cincinnati Police Department and the city of Cincinnati as it pertains to our SROs, and would like to submit that today, this can count without a reading, as our first reading to be perhaps voted on for our second reading regarding continuing that relationship. We currently have a contract that goes through the 2023. We had some significant efforts be made. We've been challenged on a number of issues regarding it, but I think it is time for us to make a decision. So today, without the read-through, and I think this is allowed since board members have seen, and general counsel and superintendent have at least also seen it prior to even the board members seeing, I would just like to submit what has been passed out, and we can post it now for public, the continuation of that relationship for a vote and good discussion, obviously, and I believe it would be coming on the September 12 date, unless indeed the superintendent and the president decide that we're going to have a business meeting at the COW because we need to about other matters. But hopefully, just submit that for first reading, and for the public, it has to be considered first and second reading because it is not coming out of any committee, but it is a crucial issue for all of us to deal with. The other update that I have is from the Urban Network, and at the Urban Network, they distributed again the Ohio Department of Education, Ohio's Whole Child Framework, which has been their strategic plan, if you will, for a number of years. And we did play a big part in that strategic plan. So I know that board staff is going to post it electronically. I do have a couple of hard copies with me as well. And so those are my two updates. And an inquiry about just very specific issues regarding what the superintendent's already, I think, looking into, which is the bus stop evaluation, which is required by law, and then also getting an update from the city of Cincinnati regarding how many crossing guards we have. So my update is the SRO resolution and the Whole Child Framework from ODE, which I think should inform our work going forward, at least for this coming year. And my inquiry is just to make sure that we have the bus stops, yellow bus stops, I should say, covered and inspected, and also our understanding of crossing guards, since that is the responsibility of the city. But I know the superintendent's already on it, I just want to make sure we state that for the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Bolton. Any other inquiries or updates? I think we can get folks out of here by 7:30 if we, even earlier, maybe. So I'll just, a couple in response to Ms. Bolton, and then I had a couple of very quick things myself, speaking, this is just for myself, but on the SRO resolution piece. For me, I think it'll be very important to hear if there's a recommendation from the administration, both about what it should be and the timing of it, you know, like, and so I'm not saying anybody else needs to feel that way, but I think those are the kinds of questions that I'd like to ask and think about if we talk about it next time. Did you have a thought, Superintendent?
Thank you, Board President. So actually, having, as Board Member Bolton shared, having reviewed the proposal for the resolution, understanding the work that we've already done with those that do have concern about the SROs, as well as the work that we have also done and continue to do in partnership with CPD, I do think that it would be timely and appropriate that the board take action and make a statement about what it is that we're doing, and I think the resolution would do just that.
Thank you very much. So two things for, while we have everybody here together, both of which can be quick. I have received, I think, some just conflicting perspective about where we put kudos in our meetings, with some people liking them at the end and some people liking them at the beginning. I'm not entirely sure what to do because I hear different things from different people. And so I'm going to, I think probably, I wanted to create a moment where if anybody wants to advocate that we do something different from what we're currently doing, please do. But I want, and then we can see if a majority of people feel that way, we will move them. So would anybody like to make a pitch that we move the location of the kudos?
Can I just add something for context?
Yes, ma'am.
I want us to be careful about shifting the agenda frequently. And we, over the past couple of years, we've gone back and forth. So it was in the beginning at first because hearing of the public was down lower, and then we changed it because it was that folks want a hearing of the public up front, and so we pushed announcements and kudos down a little bit on the agenda. Now, and then you, we did it again this year when you modified it. And my concern is that it's a lot of shuffling, and I don't understand it. I would much rather leave it as it is. Maybe we can come back to it or whatever, but I would.
That's fine. Yeah, thank you, Vice President Jones. Anybody want to make a pitch to keep it or to sort of move it? Mrs. Weinberg? Mrs. Weinberg?
I think we should just leave it as is.
As is, okay. Anybody? Dr. Moffett?
I asked that it be moved because I use it as a way to say thank you, particularly to staff, if I'm able to, like, for instance, we had a great back-to-school event cookout at the downtown and normally I would have pictures, but I don't have them today. So I don't think, I don't want to have people wait until the end of a meeting to see good things. I think we have people tune in at the beginning, hearing of the public is right there, we could give kudos where we have a lot of people in attendance. I thought that was the purpose of kudos, is when people can see them getting, themselves getting acknowledged, if that's the case. And so that was why I asked that it be up further. I think people can adjust. If they see the agenda posted, then they know where it stands as far as moving it. But again, I have to go with my colleagues, but I use it for that purpose as a kudos. I think that having it at the end is just a little long. And actually, I'm trying to piss my board members off and be as long-winded as I can because they want to get out of here, so I think that we should keep it at the, or at the top. We should move it to the top.
Is there, I think, so I think what I'm hearing, unless somebody else, we will revisit this topic in a little bit and see if people change their perspective, but I think we'll leave it as is for now. Okay, last, if you would like to make a motion, any board member can make a motion at any time.
Let's take a vote. I mean, you know.
If you'd like to make a motion, make a motion.
So I make a motion that we vote kudos to after hearing of the public where more people can, the kudos and the good things that are going.
Is there a second?
Not one.
Second, I'll second it just for the sake of a vote.
And from Vice President, any discussion? Hearing none? All in, let's do it, let's actually do a roll call on this one, just so it's a little clearer. Would you, would you call the roll?
I want to look at you people to see who is voting against moving kudos up.
Ms. Wagner, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Bolden?
No.
Mr. Craig?
No.
Ms. Jones?
No.
Dr. Moffett?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
Mrs. Weinberg?
No.
President Lindy?
No. Okay, so the motion fails, but we can certainly try again at a future date. I'm going to keep us moving. I have, we're going to move to assignments. I have one, but I'll go last. Vice President Jones?
Yes, I would like to make an assignment to policy committee to, on their own timeframe, review the policy positions around the standing committees and change, make some revisions in the language and the functions of the committee.
Thank you, Vice President Jones. Other assignments? I'll offer one. I also would like to ask this of the policy committee, though I'm open to other places if people would prefer, but Mr. Morosky will remember that about a year ago on policy, CPS passed its first ever responsible bidder policy, asking vendors to share information about whether they have a state-approved apprenticeship program, whether or not they contribute to employee retirements, whether or not they contribute to employee healthcare. I think that was a really good step forward for our district. It's been about a year and I am open to different ways that this could look, but I think to have some kind of report on how does it go? Has it, has it been effective? Has it not been effective? But some kind of update on, we're a year in, how is responsible bidder working in the CPS context?
Great, and we'll have Ms. Davis. Wagner will get both those items on our agenda for Friday.
Thank you. Ms. Bolden?
Unfortunately, I have an assignment also to policy based upon some board discussion that occurred a couple of meetings ago, and that is for the policy committee to review and I think board members will remember this as well, the superintendent regarding remote employment. I think we need to address that as a district and I think it was said that we should do that. So assign it to policy to at least investigate it. I don't know that we have to come up with a policy, but.
We will add that to the agenda for Friday. This is why you can't get rid of policy committee.
Can't. Okay, last call, assignments. Okay, we are now, last item, announcements and kudos. Does anybody have any kudos this evening?
I don't have my kudos today, but I will have my kudos in September.
Sounds good.
So make sure that you all tune in. At the end, we're going to be talking about our kudos.
Thank you, Dr. Moffett. Ms. Bolden?
I have one kudo that's very, very, very positive and then a semi-announcement, just to remind those people watching, but my kudo is to whomever organized the safety town hall. And, and of course, we had our own colleague, Dr. Moffett moderated, we had our superintendent present, and we had two very outstanding panels, both about school safety and mental health. And I've been here now 15 years, I'm about ready to start the 16th year in January. And I have to tell you, it was one of the four or five most impressive efforts we've made was, and we've had a lot, I'm proud to say, at CPS because I am CPS. You are CPS.
We are CPS, yes.
But that, that was singularly, that was singularly well-done and, and particularly, I think the superintendent, of course, is a preacher's daughter, so she can preach. But, but more importantly, those community panels were just remarkable and your moderation was outstanding, Dr. Moffett. So that's my kudo. Now, on a very, not negative, but preemptive, preemptive piece, and this is actually serious. I was, I've been reminded by one family, and those of us that have been on the board for a while, will, will remember that between September and December of 2018, 13 of our children were hit by cars. And, and that was when we had extra routes and God knows what else. So there's, I'm just saying for all the folks that are, that need to be present, as the superintendent says, that's everybody driving wherever there are kids. And it's just the most, it was just the most horrible experience for all of us and, and had a family reach out who had indeed lost their precious child. So let's remember that, you know, we used to have schools open, everybody had that on their bumper sticker years ago and it was on all city cars, it was on all district cars. Be careful, look, be careful. So be careful and take care of our precious children.
Thank you for that, Member Bolden. Any other announcements, kudos, before we head out? Mrs. Weinberg?
Yes, I just wanted to take a brief second or two to just congratulate all of the schools on their back-to-school events. I was able to go to Carson Elementary this weekend and it was really nice and I wanted to also just thank Superintendent Wright and everyone on her team for making the main back-to-school event very enlightening and very put together for the community. The word in the street is that everyone in the community loved that event and they can't wait until next year. So, word of the street.
Thank you, Mrs. Weinberg. Others? Dr. Moffett?
I'll just say, I thought, I do think our safety town hall was great. If you, if you didn't get a chance to attend, you missed it, but to the entire team that put that together, Superintendent Wright, everybody, it was awesome. It was really, really awesome. And I did go to the back-to-school events and the energy in the air is great. I'll have picks next, next board meeting, so for sure for that. But I also want to say to all of the staff, the admin, the teachers, the port staff, everybody, thank you for getting the buildings ready for our kids. The kids are excited, parents are super, super excited, kids not as much, but it's time, it's that, it's back-to-school time and it takes a team effort. So I want to say thank you and to have a great first day of school, August 18. If you took a book bag, if you did, if you got anything, then you have an obligation to have your son or daughter in our buildings on August 18. Come out, parents, let's go. Got it.
Thank you, Dr. Moffett. If I think we have no other kudos or announcements, having no other business before us, it's 7:30. Declare a meeting adjourned.
Thank you.